Good evening and welcome to the Select Board meeting, Bennington, June 12th, 2023. I have the pleasure of chairing this board. My name is Jeanne Jenkins and I'll ask my fellow board members to introduce themselves, starting with Sarah.
Hi, good evening. Sarah Perrin. I did a little arts and crafts project, so you all know my name today.
Hi, I'm Gary Corey.
Good evening, I'm Jim Carroll.
Hi, Tom Haley.
Jean Conner.
I'm Ed Woods.
Great, thank you all. And also with us tonight, we have Dan Monks, Assistant Town Manager. We have Jonah Spivak, who is a technical wizard and also our Communication Coordinator. We have Nancy Lively, who takes excellent minutes every meeting. And we have Josh Boucher, making sure everyone at home can see the meeting on Cat TV. Thank you all. Just a reminder, this is a large room with very poor acoustics. If you're having trouble hearing, there are some seats down front and you're also willing, able to bring a chair up if you need to. There's also one set of headphones if it would help you hear better. So with that, tonight's meeting, we have several big issues. And to that end, I'm going to ask everyone to be very respectful in saying what you need to say and then ceasing speaking, okay? So we're going to try and keep, we want you to say everything you need to say, but when you've said what you need to say, please stop. So, given that, we're going to start as we always do with the Pledge of Allegiance. Jim will lead us.
My pledge of allegiance to the Constitution of America and to the republic which was founded, one nation, united, indivisible, for liberty, justice, and all.
Thank you, Jim. Oh, and now Tom, would you read the town vision statement that guides all our work?
My pleasure. Bennington is a welcoming, engaged, inclusive, resilient community where everyone, regardless of identity, shares in our vitality and benefits from an outstanding quality of life.
Thank you very much, Tom. All right, next up is the consent agenda. For the purposes of discussion, could I have a motion to accept the consent agenda?
So moved.
Great, so we have minutes from May 22nd and also May 30th. Are we okay?
No, I sent in corrections, I believe they were received.
I'm sorry?
I sent in corrections, I believe they were received.
So, okay. I was going to ask, can we do these together? Does that work for everyone?
I have a question about one of the...
Okay, so any discussion? Go right ahead.
Okay. On the May 22nd meetings, after we came out of executive session, the board went into executive session at 4:30 PM for a, wasn't it a contract matter or was it really personnel? Or maybe it's open to interpret. It was definitely executive session material. I'm just not sure if it was, would be considered personnel.
It said personnel on the agenda, but I might have the same question.
Okay. Oh, then let's change it to personnel. It did?
It's been changed to legal matter.
Okay.
The topic was legal matter.
Okay, thank you.
So how was that resolved?
It was going to be changed to legal matter.
Okay. Okay, all right.
So now I'm fine.
With any other...
Should we vote on the minutes separately since some of us worked at the May 30th?
All right, let's do that. All right, then could I have a motion to move the May 2nd? Let's see.
22nd.
Yeah, so let's have a motion to vote on the May 22nd minutes by themselves. Okay. All right, all right. Any other discussion on May 22nd? No? All right, all those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? All right, great. And then let's vote, well, then I think we're taking these apart. Let's vote on the May 30th minutes.
I'm sorry, I had a question on item 23. I didn't know whether announcing for the types of drugs and stuff to each other, or you want me to wait till a public comment?
I think wait till a public comment, this one. Go ahead, so do I have a motion for May 30th minutes?
So moved.
Second?
Aye.
Okay. Any discussion? Nope. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed, please say nay. Any abstentions?
Abstention.
Okay, Gary's abstaining, anyone else? You're not? Okay. All right. And so now I think we need to vote on the warrants and the licenses. We just took this apart, all right? So could I have a motion to accept the warrants and licenses?
So moved.
Jean, and then?
Second.
Okay, great. Any discussion? All right, all those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? All right. All right. Got through that. All right, next up is public comment. So is everyone signed up for public comment who wishes to speak on an item that is not on the agenda? Yes? Okay. So just a reminder that public comment, so you may want to add, yes? Okay, so, okay, we'll do that at the end. Okay, okay. This is a reminder that the purpose is to share information that's useful to all. It is not for the purpose of discussion. Also, please remember that the best way to get answers to your questions is to go to staff people or let us know ahead of time so we can research something if it needs research. We're going to ask everyone to keep their items, their comments, to three minutes. Jean has volunteered to be the timekeeper. And unless there's an immediate question that you get when you're up there, please take your seats, so after you finish making your comment, okay? So with that, we're going to start, I see Sam Rustino is up first to talk about voting. And please introduce yourself and let us know what town you reside in.
Sam Rustino, Bennington, Vermont. Advised me of the time, but kindly don't interrupt because it affects my train of thought. Thank you. I'm glad of the turnout tonight on the agenda items. One thing at the top of the list, don't flush wipes. I'll say it twice. Don't flush wipes. It costs us taxpayers a lot for our wastewater treatment plan. Thank you. I just came from the S V C office. There was a meeting tonight at 5:30 talking about the June 13th vote. Some of you know what's going on tomorrow, some of you do not. Some of you are in the dark because you don't read the paper, you don't, you cease to educate yourself. Polls open 10:00 AM to 7:00 PM. They're normally open to 7:00 PM, they shortened it to 10:00 AM to 7:00 PM. It's a paper vote, so there's no machines or anything, so it's going to be a long process. There's four towns involved besides Bennington, Shasbury, Woodford, and Pownell. Something that should be on the agenda item, we've got, we're in a pickle. Three, yeah, 324 or two, yeah, 324 Benmont Avenue, CTC. We've been in litigation with that property. It's got to be raised. Vermont, the state of Vermont has been dragging their feet on the matter. It's another agenda item that should be put on there. Thirdly, I really don't like to see businesses leave Bennington or people that are longstanding businesses run their course and then end it. I'm speaking about a well-known business that we all truly love that ceases to, can't succumb to a different owner. It was a drawn nose-to-nose between business owners and the town of Bennington. I believe the town of Bennington need to take stock and ask the questions. Is your business struggling? Don't wait for the business to ask that question because they'll never ask it. We're losing business.
Thank you, Sam. Next up is Beth Wallace. Talk about panel land lease.
Hi, thanks for the opportunity. I'm Beth Wallace, I'm the Assistant Director for Bennington County Head Start, Early Head Start of United Children's Services, here to just provide a little bit more information on the vote tomorrow. Everyone in the S V S U E D is welcome to vote on that paper ballot if you haven't voted by absentee yet. So that's Bennington, Pownell, Woodford, and Shasbury voters. Just want to clarify that the vote is to extend the lease. We already have a Head Start preschool program in Pownell, on that Pownell campus, that includes the Pownell Elementary School, Oak Hill Children's Center, and our Head Start preschool building. We've been there since about 1995 in a modular building. Everybody knows that those modular buildings do have a shelf life and it has expired. So we want to continue to provide high-quality services to families in Pownell, and we do have some families who travel from Bennington as well. And so this vote is just on the lease, it's not on the project, not on the construction, it doesn't cost taxpayers anything. We have federal funding to support the replacement of the building, but the feds say we can't invest all of this money on a three-year lease, right? We need a 30-year minimum to make sure that our investment is safe and that that building continues to serve children and families. So we ask that you please come on out tomorrow and support the ask to extend the lease to 30 years for us. Thank you.
Thank you, Beth. Next up is Mike Bethel to discuss marketing.
I'm here to float an idea to the Select Board and to Shannon Fassadi about taking some of the money that you put aside for publicizing Bennington. Every year, there's about $50,000 in the budget. I would like to get about $2,000, maybe $3,000 to put some ads in the paper, a full, excuse me, half-page ads talking about Bennington, putting different companies that we have. Our chair is holding it up.
I don't think you can see it, but maybe in the room you can.
And if we do do this, some of those blank spaces will be paid for by the advertisers. But I'd like to promote more than just on the internet, I'd like to promote it in the paper. Between Shasbury and Pownell, there's 7,000 residents roughly. Bennington has roughly 16,000. So you do the math, and you just encourage those folks to remember Bennington and all of their merchants on Northside Drive downtown, all the restaurants, all the, you know, and in the middle of that, it's going to be a half-page, there'll be enough room to put on every ad, a message about what's going on that week or that month or whatever. And the internet's great, but a lot of people don't jump to the internet. This would be on the back page or some part of it, and it would be like every two weeks we put an ad in. And if we could do it, if I could get an answer from Shannon, we could get, you know, one in for June and then two for July, August. I'd like to go through leaf peeper season, depending on, you know, how much money and everything else. Some of the ad space I have, you know, already people said they'd pay for, they're part of it. So I just wish you'd maybe encourage Shannon to listen to it and take some of that money. $50,000 is a lot. I'm only asking, I think the max would be maybe three, to be honest with you, because some of those people will pay their own, they'll pay it their own way. $350 for a half-page is pretty good, the banner's given us a deal. Usually it's about 500. So I just wish you'd consider it and maybe talk to Shannon about it, and I'll call her later or next week or something and see if she'll go. Okay? Thank you.
Thank you, Mike. All right, next up, Lori Mulhern. Sorry.
Hi, Beth. My name's Lori Mulhern, I'm a resident of Bennington, and I came this evening to mention item 3B on the consent agenda and noticed that there are documents that are usually on this agenda that are not available for review prior to the meeting, more specifically the warrants. As these are related to Bennington, the town of Bennington, they're not included in the packet and they should be available for review by residents without having to request them or to come to a board meeting. And there was a little bit of a procedural thing. I went on the website to check on how to sign up for what I wanted to speak on, and it mentioned that I should put specifically, you know, and speak on the agenda item when it's being discussed. So it kind of contradicts the instruction this evening, so I don't know if we should ask at the meeting how you prefer that day, whether it's to speak on the agenda item when it's being discussed, or whether you'd like all of it to be under public comment, because the instructions on the town website indicate that, you know, you should speak while the agenda item is up.
Yeah, generally people do speak on the agenda item when it comes up. The warrant should be part of the packet, so I'm very surprised to hear that. We get our packet separately, so we don't generally look at what is on the public website, but that's an oversight if it's not there, so.
I've checked back several months and they're not included, so I think it's a procedural thing, so.
Well, it should be, so.
Yeah, so if you wouldn't mind just throwing it out there.
You absolutely have a right to see them. So that's our error and we will take care of that. And if you have a question on a warrant, calling either the town manager or the Assistant Town Manager is the best way to get that resolved.
That's fine, just having them available for review would be great.
Yeah.
Prior to the meeting. And so the next item I have is me as well, but it's about item six.
Yeah, I think you want to hold that one, yeah.
Will do.
Okay. Thank you. Okay. And thank you for bringing that to our attention, Lori. Kelly Carroll, Riverwalk.
Hi, Kelly Carroll, Bennington. I just wanted to let everybody know that the monthly Riverwalk is Saturday, June 17th at 10:00 AM. It starts at People's Park and this year, or this year, this month, we're going to be walking up to the Bennington Community Garden and we're going to have an informal talk by Master Gardener Megan Harrington. Participants will be able to have refreshments and vegetable starts. And if you haven't been to the Bennington Community Garden, you should check it out, it's an amazing place. It provides garden, community garden plots, but it also hosts the Giving Garden, which donates free food to those that need it. So again, this is Saturday, June 17th at 10:00 AM. It starts at People's Park. If you're, if walking up and back is a little bit too much, then please feel free to park up at the rec center up by the garden. So, thank you.
Thank you very much, Kelly. And then last on the agenda is Nancy White, and I don't see a topic, but you'll share.
Nancy White, Bennington. It's unfortunate that most people in Bennington, Pownell, Woodford, and Shasbury have no idea that there is an important vote they should be participating in tomorrow. I urge the citizens in these towns to go vote where you'd normally vote for town meeting in March. The S V S U waited until tonight to hold informational meeting. The meeting should have happened a month ago. In June, there is always extremely low voter turnout. That's probably why the vote is being held tomorrow. This is going to cost the taxpayers. The S V S U wants to charge UCS a dollar a year for 30 years for rent with a second 30-year option. That means the taxpayers in the four towns will continue to pay the costs for plowing, mowing, insurance, and lighting. Anything that happens on that property for the next 60 years, I believe, only the taxpayers will pay and UCS won't contribute anything. They should be paying their share. I've also been reading that the Vermont Legislature needs a new $80 million plus each year to help fund these facilities like the one in Pownell that Mopulier wants all over the state. That $80 million will impact every member of the working class in Vermont, and most people haven't even heard about this. So I hope people get out tomorrow, defeat the vote, have the people you elected give you the information and the time to think and get the information out there so that we can hold the second vote. My question for the Select Board. A few years ago, without voter approval, you let UCS put the identical building on our town land attached to our town rec center. You gave them a lease that says for 99 years, they only have to pay their landlords, the Bennington taxpayers, a dollar a year. You did that lease without voter approval. How is that legal?
Nancy, this is public comment, so if you have a public comment...
And I asked multiple, I asked multiple times for over a year before UCS went forward, how that could be done without voter approval? The taxpayers of Bennington have owned and paid for that property for 50 years. And to find out that the school system needs voter approval for a lease in Pownell for UCS, it makes me think you probably needed voter approval for that lease in Bennington.
Nancy, you have 30 seconds left.
Okay. I want the town lawyer to put out an opinion on paper, because again, think about it, for 100 years UCS pays nothing. We continue to pay the fields, the equipment, the courts. This is Bennington town land that we have owned and paid for, and the people of Bennington really got taken to the cleaners, and I want to know if it's legal that that lease that you gave UCS is legal or not.
Thank you very much.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I can clarify that.
Please.
That lease was reviewed by council and approved by council, so there is no legal issue with that particular lease.
Okay, thank you.
That lease was approved by council.
All right, next up is Chelsea Solar Discussion. We have received a trove of materials, which I hope were available to the public as well. And what we are planning to do tonight is to begin with Alco Renewable Energy presenting. They presented to the Planning Commission, and after considerable discussion, the Planning Commission made a recommendation to this board, to the Select Board, that we deny Alco Renewable Energy's request to deem the Chelsea Solar project as within a preferred area under the Town Plan Energy Amendment. So what we're going to hear now is a presentation by Mr. Galton and Mr. Malone from Alco Renewable. Then we'll take questions from the Select Board and then from the public, and we're going to hold those comments, those questions and comments to three minutes each. And then the Select Board will make a motion to either uphold the Planning Commission's recommendation or to find that Chelsea Solar does indeed meet the criteria for a preferred site under the Town Plan Energy Amendment. Okay? So with that, please introduce yourself and...
Good evening, Rodney Galton. I'm Senior Project Manager for Ecos Energy. And if you, I'm here to present the updated design for Chelsea Solar and how it pertains in particular to the preferred area designation.
And can I just clarify, the updated plan is what the Planning Commission saw?
That is correct. Yes. So this is a 2-megawatt solar facility on 27.3 acres off of Willow Road in the Rural Conservation District. The clearing is 9.54 acres. This, previously what was proposed was approximately 10 acres. We've actually minimized that footprint due to new efficient panels. So this will be part of the vet program for the next 25 years, and this is eligible for the low-income tax credit, which can be paid to the town. And that credit is estimated to be $425,000.
I'm going to move up even a little bit more if you're certain. If you can speak right into the...
Sure, sure. Not a problem. Yep. Next slide, please. So I'm just going to walk up to the screen and highlight the project area so everybody It's demonstrated as that dark line, that is the project limits. This is the actual site plan with the proposed grading, and as you can see, we are proposing grading to the north and northeast of the project, and we are proposing grading, some excavation, some earthwork for the access drive off of Willow Road. So, back in 2019, the PUC did issue a final order for the previous project. Now, they did, the PUC did determine that a portion of the project would share infrastructure with the Apple Hill project along the GMP utility line extension. They determined that because it shared some of that infrastructure, that this was no longer a single plant. Now, they gave us two options to rectify the situation. One was to formally merge the two projects into one project and reapply. The second was to demonstrate that all infrastructure would be separate for the two projects. That's the option that we chose and that's why we're in front of you. January 2018, the town of Bennington adopted the Town Plan Energy Amendment. This introduced the concept of the preferred areas. Areas with proximity to existing hedgerows, and this is important, or other topographical features that naturally screen the entire proposed array are specifically identified as preferred areas. Clearly, the intent of this provision is to include any site as preferred if the project is not visible because of the existing hedgerows. Again, this is the important concept, existing hedgerows or topographical features. This project was specifically designed to meet the criteria for a preferred area. The project is naturally screened by existing hedgerows without alteration to those hedgerows. Due to changes in the solar module efficiency, as I mentioned earlier, we were able to get the footprint under five acres, we were able to drop the clearing under 10 acres. We've had environmental consultants review this project, and they have deemed no adverse impact to resource waters, water pollution, headwaters, floodways, wetlands, soils, ag soils. And the big thing here is we do not impact any primary ag soils. Based on comments from the Planning Commission, there was concern over hydrology due to the earthwork proposed for this project. They deemed that there was no significant impact to hydrology or hydrogeology in the area, including water supplies, groundwater, drainage streams, and other wetlands. The PUC had already confirmed prior to this redesign that this project met the statutory criteria regarding aesthetics and orderly development. This project now is smaller due to more efficient panels. Again, we were able to reduce the footprint of the array and reduce the amount of clearing. And we've had numerous consultants, some of which are here tonight, work on a design to make sure we meet the definition of the preferred area. So this is a photo simulation from the golf course, and the proposed array is not visible from this vantage point. And again, I'll walk up to the screen and demonstrate where the array will be located. So again, that array cannot be seen from that vantage point. This is a simulation... This is a simulation from the Welcome Center. And again, I will walk up to the screen and show where the proposed array will be located.
Yeah, please, please, please. Let him do his presentation. You will have an opportunity to ask questions.
So recently, the IRS announced a tax incentive for low-income communities. This bonus tax increases the investment credit by approximately 10 percentage points. This community qualifies for that. And as mentioned earlier, the estimated tax credit would be approximately $425,000 for the Chelsea project as well as the Apple Hill project. So that's $850,000 combined. In exchange for the town support, Ecos would be passing on that tax credit to the town of Bennington. And we'd be doing that at our risk, taking on the bonus from the IRS and then passing that along to the town under the low-income tax credit. So benefits impacts, again, very low or no burden to the town services at all. A one-time payment of approximately $150,000, excuse me, $850,000 to the town of Bennington. Increased tax revenue to the town, naturally screened, no noise, no waste, very little traffic, no lighting, very, very little impact to the town. And it helps Bennington meet their renewable energy goals for 2025. Now, Planning Commission did find that substantially altering a forested site to create new open field for solar was not contemplated by the Energy Amendment. However, the Board of Selectmen has ruled that Stark and Warner Solar do meet the criteria for preferred, even though those were forested sites and they were cleared to accommodate the solar array. So this would be in conflict with previous recommendations by the Board of Selectmen. So the provision, again, existing hedgerows or topographical features. And it's that "or" that is very important to us because we are not altering the existing hedgerows. We are altering the topographical features. However, that is really to accommodate the intervenors. We do not have to do that in order to screen our solar project. So the Planning Commission is looking to rewrite the Energy Amendment to change "or" to "and," existing hedgerows and topographical features. So this would be, this would really set the town down a path that would be very difficult to get any renewable energy, especially solar, inside the town borders here. Due to that substantial alteration, they, they would have a situation where that regulation would be extremely vague and very difficult to enforce. And especially for developers, because developers wouldn't know what substantial is and what substantial is not. And the fact that earthwork occurs on every solar project, there's typically landscaping, berms, you name it, it goes in there. So the, the provision does not say whether a potential site is forested or not. And this is where the conflict comes with the Select Board's decisions for Stark and Warner Solar projects right here in the town. The town wants to change the definition of preferred area as it currently is written. It has the ability to do so through normal legislative process with respect to the town As demonstrated the following visual simulations, even if the project was to be built without the contemplated grading and earthwork, it would still qualify as a preferred area. The grading is to accommodate intervenors and their concerns from other elevated areas around town. This simulation is from the Welcome Center. And you see the yellow arrows in the bottom right of the slide. They show the viewpoint to where the solar array is to be located. Again, this is, this demonstrates the fact you cannot see that array even without that extensive earthwork that we're proposing. This is, if trees outside of our control were to be removed, you still could not see that array from this vantage point. So this is, this is one of the things we wanted to demonstrate. Because the Planning Commission, the screening, some of the screening we had shown on our simulations was outside of our control. And it was actually in the V-Trans right away. And that was to the west and south of our array. So the local screening ordinance, excuse me, is, are two different things from the Energy Amendment. The Energy Amendment does not say naturally screened by vegetation controlled by the applicant. The Planning Commission is attempting to rewrite the Energy Amendment to reflect this. Second, it's highly unlikely V-Trans would cut down those trees, but we did do simulations to reflect that. So again, this is, this is the site plan for the proposed array. And this is existing conditions from eye level, Route 7 North. This is proposed conditions from Route 7 North, eye level. And this would be if there was clearing beyond our, beyond the property line, you still cannot see the array from this vantage point, Route 7 North, eye level. Again, this is the Welcome Center simulation. This is existing conditions, eye level. This is proposed conditions, eye level from the Welcome Center. And again, if there was clearing beyond our property line, this is eye level from the Welcome Center, you still cannot see the array. So the Planning Commission had concerns for residences north of the project. They believe that this would be a problem for those residents, especially the clearing itself. Now, that opinion was contrary to any evidence that was presented. And it's completely unrelated to the preferred area designation. And I am Rodney Galton once again. And myself and my consultants are here to answer questions that the board may have.
Okay. So we'll start with the board and then we'll move to public, okay? Anyone on the board have a question? Yes.
I have one and I think it's for my fellow board members. I want to confirm that this is the plan that the Planning Commission already saw
Yes.
and advised us.
Yes. So Ed is asking, I, so Ed, this is a question that I also asked at the beginning.
Sorry, Walter. Can you hear me now?
Yes. That the, the plan being discussed now is what the Planning Commission heard about and met on for two separate hearings that we have materials on.
Yes, that is correct.
Thank you from the newest board member.
Yes. To a clarification. Your question, please?
Yeah. Can you speak in much more detail about the earthwork you're referencing? You've mentioned it several times. And this is more for the public than for myself, but that deserves a much longer description.
Hi. My name's Ian Jukes. I'm a civil engineer from Krebs &amp; Lansing. If you can go back to a site plan.
You'll need to speak directly into the microphone.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Sorry.
That's terrible. Sorry.
Okay. So the earthwork that we're showing here is, basically it's made to depress, you know, get the array lower on the north end of the site so that you can't see the site from the far vantage points like, I guess, the golf course. So what's going on is on the north end of the site, it's the, the array area is being pushed down. And on the south end of the site is being raised slightly. And so there's like, there's cut slopes on the north and the east side and fill slopes, not as much fill down in the southwest side.
And is what I read accurate? When you say pushed down, you mentioned, or in the report it said 18 feet?
That's correct.
Down?
Yes.
As in a pit?
Yeah. So that's, so they're taking that area and pushing that surface down.
Is it excavating or are you pushing it down?
Excavated.
Okay.
So sorry. So there'll be, there'll be side slopes that are sloped down to the flat area with the array on it.
So essentially, you're putting the solar array in a pit that's 18 feet below?
Yeah, the maximum depth, yeah. At the north end, it would be 18 feet and then it would transition to fill of, I think, I think six feet at the south end.
If I could add to that as well, I did mention during the presentation that the reason why we dropped the elevations on the north side is to screen this project from elevated locations around the town, specifically the golf course. Because I know they've been very interested in this project, so. But the intervenors had the concern, that's why we're doing that excavation, is to screen it from elevated vantage points around the town.
Thank you. Other questions?
I have a question. You're going down 18 feet. Have you done test borings to 18 feet to see if you've got ledge in that area?
We do have a few borings. And it's, we haven't hit ledge, but we've hit, you know, sort of stiff soil down at the bottom, which is, you know...
Was that at 18 feet?
Yes. We still need to do more. We only have a couple in that area.
I have one more question, just on, did, did the Planning Board see the visual impact assessment report when you, when you presented to them?
They, they saw the visual assessment report, yes. That was, that was presented to them.
Was that in November or December? I see two dates on this report that I have. One says November, one says December.
I believe that was the December meeting. Is that correct, Dan?
December 13.
Yes.
Can I ask a follow-up? So if you need to do more bores to make sure what you have at 18 feet, does that mean you don't know how you will excavate that area until you do more bores?
I guess correct. I mean, it, we haven't seen anything yet that would suggest we can't excavate it. But obviously, when you go to construction, you'll want to be very careful.
And I guess I'm asking because I think that somewhere I read that you were not anticipating any blasting, but...
That's correct.
...what you find, that could change.
Only if you found the actual ledge.
Okay.
Yeah. We are not anticipating any, any blasting at all. We are comfortable with the boring information that we have, that blasting would not be necessary.
Other questions from the board?
I have another question.
Oh, go ahead, Gary.
In the hydraulic evaluation, it says that in stormwater that the drainage was .33 acres of impervious land. And, but we have five acres of panel, solid panel. Do those not count for impervious acreage?
That's correct. And for my, it's, solar panels are not deemed to be an impervious surface.
Okay. Because they're not on the ground, is that...
Right. Because there's grass underneath them. It's sort of like a tree in an orchard, it still has grass under it.
Does .33 include the roadway into that?
Yes. That's primarily what is the impervious surface here.
Other questions from the board?
So am I correct in that over nine and a half acres will be cleared, would be cleared for this project?
Yes, that's correct. 9.54 acres, that's correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Jim?
I wonder if you would be so kind as to tell the assembled people here, as well as the folks watching on CAD TV, what the Planning Commission told you their conclusions
As stated during the presentation, they were concerned about hydrology due to the amount of earthwork that we had here. They were concerned that the abutters to the north specifically would be able to see the clearing limits. And they were concerned that the vantage point from elevated areas around town, this array would be visible from those, from those areas despite our efforts to drop this site down. So they, they, it was their conclusion that this was not a preferred area because of that. But the preferred area, there is, we do meet the criteria because we do have existing hedgerows that screen this. And therefore, you know, it, we feel that it is a preferred area because of that.
But their final, their final conclusion was to reject the project?
That is, they, to reject the preferred area designation.
Correct. Yeah. Okay. Thanks.
Any other questions from the Select Board? No? All right. Questions in the...
One more.
Oh, yes, please. Gary?
Do you know why, I mean, the, there was preferred sites that were set up in, in the...
Could you speak into the mic?
Yeah. There was preferred sites that were set up in the Bennington Town Energy Element. And that identified 540 acres around town, 340 of it for, for panels. Do you know why this particular site was not listed on that as a preferred site?
I, I don't know why this site wasn't listed. However, the amendment does allow for a property to be added as a preferred area if it meets certain criteria. And this property meets those criteria for that preferred area designation.
Any more questions from the Select Board? No? All right. Questions from the public?
Do these speakers also have three minutes? Yes?
And we will ask you to say your name and...
Yes.
...town or residence.
My name is Laura Block. I think I've been here many times to speak about these solar projects because they have been, this company has been trying to put them into our area, Chelsea and Apple Hill, for 10 years. So I'm a resident of the Apple Hill neighborhood. And I know you didn't want many speakers, so I'm speaking on their behalf. And many of my neighbors are here, which I'm very happy to see. And so is Marou Leon from the Country Club. So she will probably tell you why she thinks, what she thinks of this project. So we hope and assume the Select Board will vote to support the recommendation of the Planning Commission that Chelsea Solar can't be artificially created as a preferred site. I read the Planning Commission's conclusions, and I think they were a little bit different from what was just said. The other, so the, and they mainly pointed out that the preferred site designation, even if you add one that isn't already labeled a preferred site, has to meet certain criteria. None of those criteria say that you can blast down and change the preferred site topographically to... to make it into a preferred site. They do say that there should be naturally, naturally occurring hedgerows. This company has already illegally cleared many of those hedgerows. They are under questioning by the PUC already about having already illegally cleared many of those hedgerows, that if they were still there, might have shaded, protected the site from being visible. Not only isn't this location a preferred site, it's also a site that has been denied by the PUC and the Supreme Court of Vermont because it is, goes against the parts of the town plan that prohibit ruining the view of a prominent hillside that is visible from important locations, the monument and the country club. The developers have already completed their petition to the PUC...
Laura, you have 30 seconds.
Uh, I'm gonna need some more time, I'm sorry, because this is, this is a very important thing, and I'd like to be able to say what I need to say to tell you...
I just have to be fair, that's all.
Uh, the, this extension is important.
Laura, what you might want to do is see if there are people who would speak, who will give you their time.
I just have a quick question, and just, uh, get it handed off to someone else. Sorry, can she get a second?
Jeannie?
Okay.
I do think since, since Laura's speaking for the group...
She's speaking for the others, that's what I'm saying.
...that she should have significant time, like the applicant did, so I do think that's appropriate.
All of my neighbors are giving me some time? Is that what's happening? Thank you.
Yes.
Yeah, because they've elected, they've chosen me to be their speaker. So, yes, I should have thought of that. Thank you. So, they've already told the PUC, they don't even need this preferred site designation because the PUC decides what they decide to allow or not allow a project, whether or not a town says yes or no. They don't need a preferred site designation. They've already completed their petition to the PUC with this project, whether or not it gets a preferred site designation. The PUC is the one that's, the agency that makes the decision, not us. They'd like to have your approval, but they don't need it. And they've also asked the PUC to give them another, yet another extension for completing their contract to give themselves more time to build it. That extension is very important to the developers because each contract has an end date. The contract that this developer got more than 10 years ago awarded them 13 cents per kilowatt hour. New contracts are only eight cents per kilowatt hour. For the developers, of course, it's all about the money. They've labeled this project Chelsea, and they don't, haven't wanted to move it to a real preferred site because if they move it, the contract stays with the land. They can't take that contract and move it. So that's why they really, really want this land, which has already been denied by the PUC, and Chelsea has already been denied by the Supreme Court. And the other thing to keep in mind is, what you see there is only Chelsea, but adjacent to Chelsea is Apple Hill, and even though, as we were told, they split their projects into two, Apple Hills and Chelsea, so they don't share infrastructure, they really are adjacent. And the, the Apple Hill project is still in, in the Supreme Court. They haven't decided yet whether or not to deny it, the Supreme Court, but they might allow it, which means that we would have two adjacent projects visible from the, as on a prominent hillside. They're not talking about knocking down the topography for Apple Hill. So, there, you really need to keep in mind that there are two adjacent projects that they're working on. So, so because they're still demanding to get this Chelsea project built to keep their contract at 13 kilowatts per hour in the same site, instead of moving it to a preferred site. So, for that reason, because we've, Apple Hill and the Country Club have been fighting these developers for 10 years to make them comply with the town plan and the energy amendment. And so for that reason, I'd really like to thank the town for formally intervening at the PUC regarding Chelsea. As I said, for 10 years, we have, the Country Club and Apple Hill Homeowners Association has been the, have been the only local interveners asking the PUC to deny both of these projects, and we have succeeded. We have won at every, every time they, the PUC or the Supreme Court, almost the Supreme Court, they haven't made a final decision about Apple Hill yet. And so we've had a pro bono attorney helping us, but we're really happy to have the town as our ally now intervening about Chelsea. So thank you, that means a lot. At a recent meeting of the Apple Hill Association, our members voted unanimously not to accept a sizable monetary settlement from these developers, who said they might give us some money if we stopped objecting, not only to the Chelsea project, but also to the Apple Hill project, both of which have already been denied by the PUC. They basically wanted us to tell the PUC that they made a mistake. They don't ever make mistakes. The Apple Hill, so one of the conditions for us to get that money was we have to try to convince the town to not object to both of these projects. In other words, we had to get you on our side, somehow we would have to convince you, and then they would probably, possibly give us the money, the tax credit money that they were referring to. And so, we didn't, we refused that. We refused that money because we, it looked like, it looked like it would never happen because the PUC would still not approve of these plans. The household members refused the pseudo offer of money, and now, as we're all aware, these developers have made the same offer to the town...
Is the microphone, please?
These, sorry, these developers have made the same offer to the town, most amazingly, and to me really distastefully, has tried to rally the entire town to their side by mailing misleading postcards to everybody. I hope and I assume the town will not fall for this offer, just as the Apple Hill residents didn't fall for this offer. You know, it occurs to me, and I'm finishing almost now, it occurs to me that these developers, if they really cared, really cared about what they vaguely call housing opportunities, and because they think we're such a poor community that we need their help, and that, you know, their housing opportunity was in their postcard. I don't know what that really means, but, you know, they could have made a direct philanthropic donation to Bennington. They're rich, they have projects all over the country. And instead of a promise of federal taxpayer dollars, which possibly will arrive if they build these projects, it's only going to be if these projects are built, they are already constructing a huge solar farm on Rice Lane. Why not give Bennington the tax credit for that? They already have that under construction. They've already built another one that's operating behind Coggins Auto. I'm sure they're earning so much money from that one, already in operation, that if they felt so sorry for us, they could make a philanthropic donation without any political strings attached. Thank you.
Bruce, would you like to speak?
Okay, thank you, Laura.
Bruce Lee Clark, Town of Bennington. I wanted to be clear that I'm in favor of solar energy, and I'm in favor of renewable energy, and I also support the town's plan. That should not come as a surprise to anybody in this room. I am not, however, in favor of this project, or the one that is adjacent. I would love the town to receive $850,000 so that we might do something constructive with it. I know the board would be very anxious for that. However, there are many acres of already designated preferred areas. You don't have to go through all the gymnastics that we heard earlier tonight to get what you need done. The real issue is, they own this land, and they want the higher rate. I understand it. It's a commercial world out there. But this is, and I hope you will agree with me, this is the wrong project, in the wrong location, and for 10 years it's been the wrong time. Thank you.
I'm gonna ask you to please hold your applause. At the end of everything, you can certainly do that. Yes, Maru?
Hi, my name is Maru Leon, and I represent Mont Anthony Country Club here tonight. My family owns the Country Club. I also represent the members and the over 12,000 people who golf in this public facility in the heart of Bennington, Vermont. I am here to ask the board to deny this offer from this developer for the reasons that the PUC has denied it, for the reasons that have been repeatedly denied. It is against our town plan, it is on a prominent hillside, it is, it is viewed from our most visited monument in the state of Vermont, the Bennington Monument, a historic site, and also from our business, which attracts weddings, which attracts events, which attracts golf tournaments, and there's a reason why billboards were denied a long time ago in this beautiful state. We don't want to see this beautiful view in the gateway to Northshire be completely, basically changed forever by not only clearing over combined sites over 20 acres, but also filled with these solar panels. I think that it is proof that, I know that the, the different scenarios that the developer created are very hard to see from the depiction that they gave here. Not only are they already filled with trees, but they're, so basically the clearing of the 10 acres on Chelsea are not really seen there. I brought some pictures just to show, which are hard to see for everybody, but I will pass them up to the board, which are, it's very visible from many point views from the monument and also from the golf course. It is impossible to hide, even if you go those many, 12 feet, 14 feet below, you still will see it. And I will pass some of these boards around. I think not only is it, you know, the views of Vermont are our biggest assets, our open spaces, our beautiful forests, and by clearing this and by changing the views forever, it will affect our economy as well in the long run. Thank you. That's all I'm going to say?
Thank you. Yes. Whoever's hand is there, yes.
Wendy Lawrence, Bennington, Vermont, Apple Hill. I too am a supporter of solar. I have a roof full of solar panels at my home. It's about the right project at the right place. So I have a couple things. One thing for, well, first of all, the $850,000, they're not going to write you a check. I don't, I can't get into the details of it, but there are a lot of contingencies on that, and the reason that we declined their offer is because those contingencies, we felt were not going to come to fruition, so it would be the board's job to really look into that. But they're not going to write you a check for $150,000, so that's the first thing. Second thing is, with a solar project at the end of the life, it is that they are to restore the land to the state it was at prior to. If we are blasting or pushing down, as you're saying, how are you going to restore that land at the end of the life cycle of this project? Not quite sure how that would happen. Thank you.
Thank you, Andy. Please don't clap. Okay, who else would like to speak? Yes, please.
Colleen Qualls from Bennington. So I worked in construction for quite a number of years, and we all know from the terminology that they're excavating, they're removing 10 acres of soil 18 feet down? Is that correct?
Yes.
Where are all that dirt in construction that's called spoil? Where is all of that spoil going to be going? That's my question.
Okay. Who else would like? Yes, please. At the back, yes, sorry. Got a light behind you.
Diana Leiser, Bennington, Vermont. I just don't quite understand how what's termed as stiff soil would kind of translate to the ledge that you see when you drive up New Route 7. That's really stiff soil because it seems to be all ledge and rock. So, that's just my two cents. I would think it would be really hard to not have to blast there.
Sam Rustino, Bennington, Vermont. Just occurred to me that you own other projects that was brought up to in conversation by Coggins. An incident happened in a panel where the, a solar array caught fire. If one of your solar arrays caught fire, do we have to wait for a representative to respond before fire officials are allowed to do their work? We're starting to get, our solar arrays are starting to age, and they're starting to show lack of maintenance. There's a saying, "Time is money, money is time." As you can see by our agenda, we've got a lengthy, long agenda. You're wasting our time on our agenda.
Guys, 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 please. Anyone else like to speak?
We have Mary Morrissey. Jamie?
Oh, Mary, sorry, I can't see your hand either.
Mary Morrissey, Bennington, Vermont. I think one of the key words that you should have been listening to this evening was simulation. Three of the pictures that were shown tonight are simulations. Why were they not real pictures? That says a lot. Simulations are altered to provide a certain showing of what someone wants, and I hope you keep that in mind as you're making this decision. I've been with this group for 10 years, and again, I am someone that supports renewable energy... And again, I am someone that supports renewable energy and solar. But again, to repeat it loud and clear, this is not the time, this is not the place, and this is not the project that these folks are proposing to be here tonight. It's the same project. So please, listen to these good people that have fought so hard for Bennington and for the aesthetics that we have in our town plan. There has been so many cases, Supreme Court, the Public Utility Commission. How many of the people in this room have been sued by this very group that now wants to pay us money in tax credits? It's pretty painful to listen to this once again.
Thank you, Mary. Yes.
She's a hard act to follow. And a lot of people here, everybody, I'm glad everybody showed up. I just want to say, you know, one of the things that I love about Vermont--
Could you identify yourself?
Oh, I'm sorry. My name is Lincoln Codere. I live in the same general area as all you guys. One of the things that I love coming into Vermont, when I first come into Vermont and it opens up into that beautiful mountain vista, you know, and you're not going to tell me that we're not going to see that. I know we are. My wife works at the Welcome Center. She's going to be looking at that right outside of the front door at work every day. And it's already bad enough. They've already did the one down on Silk Road, and they've been clearing that to no end. It's just another big project. And, you know, we're not benefiting from it. You know, $425,000, that's a drop in the bucket compared to what these guys are going to make. And not to mention what the impact is going to do on our area. So, you know, I mean, we don't even allow highway signs on the, you know, big billboard signs on the highway because we want to see the beautiful countryside. You know, it's bad, you know, there's certain places, there's a time and place for everything, like you said. And this is not the place, and, you know, this is not the time. It's not like I'm totally against solar. I have them on my house. But I don't want to see it in every blessed landscape that we look out across. I want to see beautiful country, you know? And it, don't say it's not going to impact us, because it is, okay? And I just took a couple of notes. I want to make sure I get it covered. So I said, my wife works at the Welcome Center, you know? That's not something we want to see every day, right there. And to say, where's that power going? Are we going to get any of it? No, where's it going? Why do they insist on building all that stuff right here? And we're not even getting the benefit of it. I mean, it's not like we're getting cheaper electric bills, not by any means of the word. And I just don't understand why they want to build here. It's like we only get six months of sun in the winter time. It's not the best place in the world. It really isn't. I don't understand what, go south, hit the road, kick rocks, you know? I'm just saying, you know, there's better places than right here and Applegate. And now they're doing it down on Silk Road and everything else. And, you know, they've already, they haven't met the criteria. They've already been denied. I don't know why we're even having this discussion. Just, please, let's just close the books on it, be done, tell them to kick rocks, and have a nice day. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Peter, you're up.
I will be very quick because other people have said a lot of what I was going to say. There's a couple of things. Peter Lawrence, resident of Bennington in the Apple Hill area, right about up there, where there's ledge when they put in, ran the town water to all our houses and they had to jackhammer through the ledge, which is only a few feet deep. Can you imagine 18 feet? What's that's going to run into? But other people have talked about that. One thing that really bothers me, every time we get a presentation, the developers' people say, well, this is what the Public Utilities Commission decided. This is what the Planning Commission decided. And they put their spin on it. I'm sure you've all read the Planning Commission's report, which I think was very well reasoned, a little different from the points that the developers trying to make. You can also read the Public Utility Commission's decisions. That, but here's one thing, another thing that they've said. They said, these don't share any infrastructure, these two different things. Well, that's simply not true. They have the exact same access point. They share that. So when it said that they do not share, that's another distortion. Again, I think you should just follow what the Planning Commission did. This is not a preferred site. This is not a good site. 18 feet of excavation? I don't know, maybe 100 years from now, we can have visitors coming seeing the Bennington Canyon. But I don't think we want to do that now. Thank you.
Anyone else in the public like to speak? Nope? Want to offer, are there any points that, any questions or points that were made that you would like to respond to?
My name is Michael Buescher. I am a landscape architect with TJ Boyle Associates. Some of you probably remember me. I was in front of this board many times, working between you and Velco when they needed to build a new substation on the other side of the bypass. And we worked very hard to meet an arrangement to get that sighted as efficiently and acceptable to the town as possible. Our process to understand the visual impact of a project is not simple. It's highly technical. It uses LiDAR data, it uses GIS data. We do a very extensive job to understand where our project is or isn't going to be visible. So I would really encourage you to review the reports, see what the conclusions are. We work on a national basis. And it's frustrating to stand here and hear our work that is done to a very high level of professionalism just looked into the other way. And I understand the emotional component of it. But compared to where this project was originally, this developer has gone to very extensive stretches to try to make it as acceptable as possible for the town. And when we look at it and we look at the visibility, we're telling you that this project is not going to be visible. It's going to be very hidden. It's a good project, and it supports the energy goals of the state. And if you have any specific questions about visibility or views, I'd be very happy to answer those.
All right, any further questions? Thank you. Well, and I, what I was actually hoping was going to happen just now was sort of the specific questions that were brought up, that you guys were, if you wanted to say anything to those questions. Because I really do not want this to become any, any back and, any more back and forth, unless there are specific questions from the Select Board. Anything else from the Select Board? No? All right. Are we ready to make a motion? Yeah, would someone like to make a motion?
Oh, well.
Okay.
Yeah, I'll motion to accept the Planning Commission's recommendation and deny Alco Renewable Energy Limited's request to deem the Chelsea Solar Project as within a preferred site under the Town Energy Plans Amendment.
Okay. Any further discussion on that motion?
If I could just make a comment as the new guy? We heard tonight that there are preferred sites already identified. And I think that Vermont is unique in its care for, its views, land, space between people. I think that the accommodations that were made on the study that arrived at where it is appropriate are valuable. I want to go on the record as being pro-renewable energy. And I am on the record as opposed to this project. So I am in favor of upholding the Planning Commission's work.
All right, so any other discussion before we vote? No, seeing none? All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstentions? All right. Thank you very much. All right. Onto our next agenda item, which is the State Motel Voucher Program expiration. So, as most of us are aware, the motel voucher program extension, expansion that went into effect during the pandemic has ended. If you could leave quietly, that would be much appreciated. Thank you. And that many of the families and individuals that are currently housed in motels are going to lose their shelter by August. We may need to close those doors. And this has created a crisis situation for these families, for Bennington, and actually across the state. There has been much, much good work that's been done on this, on this issue for many years. And in particular, as this has been coming to the crisis point, there has been just an amazing amount of work by a lot of good people. The reason we are holding this as an agenda item tonight is because we do want to make sure that the public in general is understanding all of the work that is being done so that they are better informed and that they can also participate in a discussion about what our options are and what we should be thinking about for short, medium, and long-term steps. The Town of Bennington has been focused on housing for over a decade. It's important to our community for any number of reasons, health, safety, economic, equity reasons. And while we have put a lot of attention on Putnam and Ben-High as a Select Board and as a town, we have also done a lot of work connecting landlords with funds so that they can upgrade housing stock. We have done a lot of work on partnering, in public-private relationships with landlords and doing the legwork to provide funding and also management of funding for those projects, such as Norton House renovation with Shire's Housing and the renovation that Hale Resources has done across from Norton House on Pleasant Street. We've also, if you've been following it, done a lot of land use regulation overhaul so that we have made it much easier to build in our downtown and have made that a preferred area for, for more dense housing. We are just at the beginning of doing a rewrite of the town plan, which is a complete overhaul of the town plan. The Planning Commission is going through diversity and equity trainings to help them have a better lens to think about how to put together a town plan that impacts, that reflects the vision of this town. So we continue to look for ways that we can assist. We understand we are not a social service organization, so there are limits to what the town can do. But we want to be there as a partner as we can be. So what we wanted to do tonight was to start with Representative Dane Whitman and have him talk with us about, give us some background on what the state has been doing and how we've come to where we are right now. And then have John Rogers, who chairs the Housing Crisis Committee for Project Alliance, talk to us about what that group has been doing. And then, I think depending, and then, I think, move on to the Town and Select Board. So let's start with Representative Whitman. Yes, please.
Hello, everybody. You really have to get close to that mic, huh? Let's see here. Good evening. Thanks, everybody, for staying. Good to see you all. My name is Dane Whitman, and I serve as a state representative for Bennington District 2. And for the past three years, I've been a member of the House Human Services Committee. As many of us know, housing is one of the greatest issues facing Vermont. And shelter for our most vulnerable Vermonters is a pressing need that should weigh greatly on all of us. Today, I'd like to provide some context on the current state of emergency housing in Vermont, give updates from the legislature, and some considerations as we move forward. So, one moment, please. So before COVID-19, we knew that people in Vermont were experiencing homelessness. What we did not know as a state was the extent of this need. In March of 2020, when a state of emergency in response to the COVID-19 pandemic created a necessity for social distancing and physical isolation, the state of Vermont responded by providing an open-door policy for our General Assistance Housing Program, also known as the Hotel Motel Voucher Program. This open-door policy, which allowed anybody experiencing homelessness access to a motel room, was made possible by federal COVID dollars passed through the CARES Act, largely FEMA dollars at the beginning of the pandemic. So for some context, before the pandemic, Vermont spent roughly $5 million per year on hotels for emergency housing. And during the pandemic, that number increased to roughly $50 million per year. That's a tenfold increase. In November of 2022, according to the Agency of Human Services, Vermont was providing over 1,500 hotel rooms to about 2,500 Vermonters, including almost 600 children. And still, this was not serving everyone. As many motels across the state either chose to stop participating in the program following COVID-19 and the economy reopening, or motels were at full capacity from the people who needed shelter. We also know that as of 2022, over a third of the adults served by emergency shelters in Vermont had a mental health disorder. Roughly a quarter had a substance use disorder. And roughly a third had some other disability. I just want to maybe remind folks that this expanded program came very close to ending as early as fall of 2021, when FEMA dollars were running out. And in the spring of 2022, again, in fall of 2022, and most recently, in spring of 2023. And each of these events, myself and many leaders in the legislature pushed the administration, the Agency of Human Services, to utilize federal dollars to their full extent, including finding creative solutions with emergency rental assistance funds, which really brought us the majority of the way. And most recently, in this past year's budget adjustment, after federal funds ran out, we appropriated approximately $25 million of state general fund to essentially buy us an additional three months to get us to where we are today. And when we did approve these funds, it was difficult, but we had to signal loud and clear that the pandemic-era open-door policy was coming to an end. And we've done our best to prepare for that moment. So since March of 2020, the legislature has appropriated, since the pandemic, over $900 million in state and federal funds. That's nearly $1 billion to housing as a whole. That includes things like the motel voucher program, but also a lot into increasing our permanent affordable housing stock within the state, which we know is a long-term solution. Going forward into our next fiscal year, the current budget that we will be voting on in a few weeks, we've dedicated another roughly $100 million on in a few weeks, we've dedicated another roughly $100 million of investments into housing assistance, as well as roughly $100 million to address permanent housing. So within those funds I just mentioned, we're allocating over $25 million to the Hotel Motel Voucher Program. So the program's not going away, but it will not be fully funded, as it was during the pandemic. The $25 million will prioritize coverage during the winter months, and it will maintain eligibility to provide temporary shelter for older Vermonters, Vermonters with a disability, Vermont households with children, and survivors of domestic violence, as well as a few other eligibility guidelines. In addition, we're increasing our base funding for shelter capacity by almost 30%, and we'll be adding an additional $17 million into the Housing Opportunity Program for our fiscal year starting next year. So those Housing Opportunity Program HOP dollars are flexible funds that organizations such as the Coalition for the Homeless are already benefiting from to find solutions. So once this next, next budget gets approved, more funds will be released. As far as short-term solutions, I can share that the Agency of Human Services has released a request for proposal to providers prioritizing locations in Rutland County, Washington County, and Chinnan County, with the hopes of providing up to 1,000 beds for emergency shelter. That request for proposal was put out recently, so, you know, can't provide too much detail about that today. There also, Agency of Human Services is working with the Department of Forests, Parks, and Recreation to identify potential state parks with camp and shower facilities that may be available for people experiencing homelessness. I can also share that over these past years, other communities in Vermont have utilized some of that $900 million that we've appropriated over the past three years to implement creative, innovative solutions. These have included cases such as purchasing motels and basing support services within the office space of motels. It's included converting empty commercial spaces into supportive housing, as well as constructing modular or manufactured homes and providing social services in those settings. And I just want to remind folks that it's not too late to access those same funding sources. So in closing, I'd just like to reiterate that all of us must be accountable to address this crisis. The legislature, the town, the governor, the administration, service providers, everybody in our community. Addressing homelessness is an incredibly difficult task. It's incredibly complex, and no one entity can do it alone. So let's be focused on coming together as a community, caring for our neighbors, and know that I, as a state representative, am here to help however I can. So thank you all.
Thank you, Dane. John, you want to come up?
Thank you, Dane, for those words. John Rogers, longtime resident of Bennington County, Arlington, and I'm an elder at Mission City Church. I'm on the board at Pathways, on the Board of Vermont Foundation for Recovery, and I'm the chair of this subcommittee, which is the Homeless Crisis Subcommittee under Project Alliance, which is a newly formed organization of all our social care providers in the county. So actually, to, to, just for efficiency and to make sure I say things right, words matter, I'm just going to read this statement. It's drafted by all of us, and I think it'd be the most efficient way to, to share this information, the town can hear what's going on, and then we'll go from there, however you want to handle it, Jeannie. I do have some that I can hand out to the, to the select board if you'd like it, just for hard copy, if you'd like it.
Yes, and probably Nancy would, would be very happy to have one, too.
All right, let's see. So not the great, not the greatest way to do this for entertainment value, but it, it will be efficient and factual. So let me read it. "In, in the 518 Projects Alliance Meeting, several brought to the forefront the pending homeless crisis resulting from the termination of the General Assistance Emergency Housing Program. Within days of that discussion, 34 individuals representing 25 local community service providers, town and state offices, officials, joined together to form this Project Alliance Homeless Crisis Subcommittee. One of the first things we did is just figure, figure out what our scope was and how we're going to measure success. So let me just read you what we've come up with to define what this subcommittee is all about. The goal of the subcommittee is to establish a, to establish a coordinated and complementary response between state, town, and local community organizations that ensures homeless individuals exiting hotels over the summer are valued, supported, and connected." I just, my own comment on that was, nowhere in that statement did you hear we're, we're solving homelessness, right? This is a short term. We've got a crisis on our hands, and we're trying to organize to come alongside folks to make sure they feel valued, supported, and connected. Then, under that goal, we identified three key objectives and how we're sort of going to measure if we're, we're accomplishing this goal or not. And I'll read those to you. "By August 1st, 90% of the homeless individuals exiting hotels are formally connected to the best community partner to meet their individual needs." That's the first one. We can measure that. We're going to. The second one, "By August 1st, 80% of the homeless individuals exiting hotels have been screened for coordinated entry." Coordinated entry is the mechanism we use to ensure folks are, folks that are seeking permanent housing are in the system, and we're using our, our best agencies to help them get permanently housed. So that's, that's coordinated entry for those of you that don't know. And then the last goal under, under this subcommittee is, or under the way of measuring success will be, "By July 1st, all who need credential materials," and credential materials are photo IDs, social security cards, things of this nature, "have received support and requests for missing materials have been properly submitted." So that's what we're setting about to try to accomplish, and there's not a lot of time, right? We found out about this two or three weeks ago, and it wasn't long before that 518 Projects Alliance meeting, and we've already had our first wave, if you will, of individuals leave, leave the hotels. So I'm going to keep reading. "Members of the Housing Crisis Subcommittee have reported to the Vermont Department of Children and Families, DCF, to, to appeal for letters of interest by 6/1 to request immediate funding and resource needs to support and accelerate local efforts to prevent the address homelessness." So the DCF put out an appeal across the state, and I think there were 45 different letters of interest that were submitted, and they're right now in the process of going through those different letters and determining on how to spend, I think they set aside $10 million to support these, these letters. So we submitted four different letters. We submitted a letter for funding support for the creation of a multidisciplinary street outreach team, including service vans that will replace the state-sponsored CCHRT that terminates on July 1st. So really, an outreach team that can go out and meet with these individuals, make sure that they're getting the best services they can, and getting, making sure they're connected and getting care. That's one of the letters that's gone to the state to be funded. A second letter was submitted, asking for funding to support and purchase the Thatcher House to serve as a transitional housing facility for 10 families as they pursue permanent housing solutions. That's our second, that's our second appeal. Third appeal is funding to extend the lodging of the Fife and Drum Hotel from 15, for 15 individuals for five months as they pursue permanent housing. That's our third one. And the last one was, we asked the state to fund a transitional housing village made up of 16 single and two-person tiny houses to provide safe, supportive, service-rich environment of folks pursuing permanent housing. So those were our four appeals. They're a little longer term because we need funding from the state to do those, but those have been submitted, and we're currently waiting for feedback. We're hopeful we'll hear any day. In addition to that, the subcommittee also identified some things we can do with no funding or low funding. And I'm going to read those to you now, so you can see some of the other things we're taking action on more swiftly because we're not waiting for an answer from the state. So in addition to these requests, the state funding, for, let me just, actually, let me just, let me just read that. I sort of, sort of set it up for you. So one of the ideas is ensuring AHS, Agency of Human Services, is identifying out-of-county transitional permanent housing resources available for coordinated entry lead organizations. So I just heard about 1,000 beds. I didn't, didn't know that was happening, but this, our goal here is to make sure we know about that, and that Brock and Pathways know about that, and we're making sure that our individuals that need a bed, need, need transitional housing have this as an option if they choose to seek, choose to, to pursue it. So that's great. That's great news, and we need to just make sure our agencies know that. The second thing we're doing is partnering with the town of Bennington, per their proposal to grant $50,000 from the revolving loan program. And we're thinking the way to approach it, and we'll talk more about this with the, the appropriate people in the town, is to identify, take that $50,000 and apply it towards six families for four months versus 15 or 16 families for a month or two, because we need more time to actually get folks housed. So our idea, and we'll, we'll talk more about it when we get together, but those resources are very welcome, and we think we can make it work, and we can help six families get, you know, have some, have some transitional housing until we can get them housed. So we're pursuing that. That's awesome. Another idea is to develop a pop-up day shelter where homeless individuals can access electricity, Wi-Fi, local support agencies, showers, bathrooms. The shelter, shelter will utilize the North American Mission Board's Disaster Relief Shower Unit, and as long as it, as long as it, FEMA doesn't deploy it somewhere else, it'll be at our, at our disposal. So the idea there is really, is, is folks are finding themselves unsheltered, we'd have a place where they could coaches from Turning Point, nurses from the hospital, to really meet up with these folks and, and care for them and make sure we're, we're, no, they're not slipping through the , through the cracks. And then the last thing we're, we're talking about doing separate from what the, we've asked the state for is to produce an informational flyer to be distributed widely around, around town, which just talks about where you can get food, where you can go for help, who you can call. And this is something that nurses in the hospital could give out, all of our agencies could give out, churches could give out. It would just be a really great resource for folks that are not, not so sure who to call and where to go. So that's what we're up to. I'll read out, read the rest of this letter so everyone hears, you know, everyone sees what I just submitted to the town. "The Housing Crisis Subcommittee was asked to be, be on the slate tonight so we could share with the town and, and all of you how we've organized and the efforts we've taken so far to serve those in the community exiting the hotels in the coming months that are struggling to find permanent shelter. In full transparency, we want to express our concerns that without these efforts described before, we will not be poised to support these, those exiting the hotels, particularly those leaving the hotels in August. You see, while those exiting the hotels in June 1st were able-bodied individuals, those that will be exiting in August include families with small children, pregnant mothers, and those struggling with mental health and substance use disorder. Our estimates suggest 190, of the 191 people exiting the hotels over the summer, Bennington County could see 100 unsheltered individuals, of which 60 are highly vulnerable. I'm here representing 25 local agencies to thank the town for coming to the table to respond to this crisis, and at the same time, I'm here to compel the town and the select board to engage further. It's going to take, as Dane said earlier, it's going to take all of us working closely and consistently to ensure homelessness, these homeless individuals exiting the hotels over the summer are valued, supported, and connected." You know, these ideas that we're putting out, and the ideas the state are putting out, the ideas the town are putting out, aren't all going to solve it on their own, but hopefully we can all come together, and all these pieces will add up to helping these folks in averting this crisis that's already upon us. So I have some specific asks for the select board, and then I'll be done. Specifically, we're asking you, can you help us identify and secure and stand up a location for this pop-up shelter that would provide access to electricity, water, sewer? We'd like to have it up by July 15th, before that third wave comes out on August 1st. I've been working around town, I've been making phone calls, I've asked the state for their property over, over where all the, where the courthouse is. I'm calling houses of faith, talking to different churches. We're trying to figure it out, but I just make that appeal to you to help us as well so we can find a location. We only need about a 50 by 50 spot to do the showers, the bathrooms, and a, a sort of services tent. So we need your help there. The second one is, can the major, can the majority of the select board and key town leadership engage in weekly meetings to collaborate on initiatives to provide a coordinated and complementary response? Jeannie, you've been great about making some of the meetings. I compel more of you to join. We could use your help, your connections, your ideas. We're going to, we're going to need your resources. So please join us. The third request is, can you join us to quickly navigate the local state zoning challenges on projects that are funded by DCF? There's some big projects, those four that come back, we're going to need your help, and we're going to have to move swiftly. You know, one of the projects, the Thatcher House, we're hoping to have up by mid-August if we get the state's approval, but we're going to have to move really fast. So just forewarning on all this, if we do get the funding, we're going to try to move quickly. And then the last request is, can the Housing Crisis Subcommittee have a standing agenda item on the select board's meeting? I think, just coming back, and maybe not so lengthy and not so formal here, but one of the members from the subcommittee can come back and just keep you apprised on what's going on, what we're learning, what we're seeing, and how you can help. So I'll finish. I think that's pretty much it. Thank you for, for giving us the opportunity to talk, and let us know if you have any questions or how you want to go from here.
Thank you, John. Do we want to, I mean, I, so I'm not quite sure what to do with your asks, because three of them we have already talked about, because you made those asks earlier. You know, Dan stands ready to work with anyone that's looking for property, and, you know, he's very available, and I think actually you've had a meeting with him.
We have. It's great.
And in terms of the select board coming to weekly meetings, as individuals, we can all show up at anything, but open meeting law prevents us from having a quorum at any meeting where we are actually representing the select board. So, and I shared that with all of you as well. So, you know, all of us got the materials to join Project Alliance and to work on any of the issues that Project Alliance is doing, and I hope that we will. But it, it is a, it's a open meeting law violation for all of us to show up as, as select board, so.
Okay.
So, so you coming here is way better than us going there in some ways.
Got it. I'll come here a lot, then.
Yeah. And then the state zoning, you know, we did have a meeting, and you were on that call with
Yeah, thank you for that.
With DCF, talking about the fact that local zoning, I think Dan was pretty, Dan and Shannon were on, Shannon Barzati were on that call as well. Dan was very clear that the state zoning and permitting issues are a much bigger problem than local, because we can solve local, or at least figure out what they are, and that we will need state help to work on that. And in terms of you guys coming regularly to, to speak, I think if you, you have information to share, we would love that. So, you know, so
Great.
We can definitely talk about that. I'm wondering, Dan, do you, do you want to give any background on the memo that went out from town staff about the revolving loan project?
Sure. I think, I really appreciate
Sure, I think, I really appreciate John's comments tonight. Thank you, John. It's been a pleasure working with you so far, and I look forward to working with you further. I think John was right on in that we have a good, great concept, and I'll go through it in, in a minute, but it does need some work, and we need all to get together, and I know that Shannon and Jonah and I are, are ready and willing to sit down with John and others to, to nail down what makes the most sense, where we can spend this money. I think it's important to remember that, that the residents of this town have already passed a budget, so we have very limited financial resources at this time, but Stuart, being the creative individual he is, looked to the town revolving loan program, which is originally HUD funding, and so therefore it is appropriate that such funding could be reallocated to deal with homelessness and other housing issues. So I do, I do think Stuart was, I do admire his creativity in trying to find a way to, to squeeze some money out of a budget that's already been passed. And essentially, and John referred to it, is essentially that we would use $50,000 out of that revolving, revolving loan fund to help folks who are exiting the motel voucher program find temporary housing while they work with services to find permanent housing. And there are some criteria that Stuart had suggested, and then some criteria that John had mentioned that might make sense from how this funds can be used, and I think there's a lot of work to do with regard to how we define those criteria and how we focus this money to best deal with this problem. But I think, sitting down with John and others and the rest of the staff, I feel confident we can come up with a proposal, perhaps as soon as the next select board meeting, to make sure that, that we can give something to you folks that you feel comfortable supporting. I, I do think we're in the early stages now, and it may not be productive to talk about details until John and I have had a chance to really sit down with staff and other partners to see how best that money could be, could be used. Happy to chat more about the specific initial proposal, but seems like that's going to morph into something quite different before we all agree on what makes the most sense. And again, I just want to say, it's been a pleasure working with John, and I look forward to working with him in the future as well.
Great.
Thanks, Dan. Yeah, we'll have, we'll have some refinements to the criteria to you tomorrow, you and Stu, and Jeanne, should you have that as well? We can, we can share that. And I think that the, the revisions will keep the intent. I don't think we're going to change the intent, we just might change some of the wording and the measures, so.
I think if we can get there, I'm not concerned about it. I will get there, yeah.
Yeah, great.
All right, that's great. And then it would come to us to approve based on the new policy you just passed.
Yes. Yeah, I would, I would, you know, I think we'll make the, we'll make sure we make the time to, to get together and, and make sure we have something that you guys can look at, that you folks on the select board can look at and review and hopefully approve at the next meeting. We can do that.
Thank you.
All right, and then the last piece is, at, at the agenda setting meeting where we were talking about how best to share all the work that is happening at present, we started talking about what are the things that we actually need state support on to be able to move forward. And so, I guess late last week, we sent this draft letter to everyone that Tom's going to read, to all of the select board that Tom's going to read. So we're hoping to be able to make, finalize this tonight and vote on it, so we can send it to our delegation. They have seen a draft of it, and we got very positive responses from them in terms of who they could reach out to and start making some of this happen. So Tom.
Okay. Dear Legislative Delegation, as you are aware, the end of the motel voucher program has created a crisis situation for families and individuals utilizing this resource, as well as for communities within the affected, within which affected recipients reside. The town of Bennington staff and select board have been fully aware of this looming crisis. We have diligently worked to encourage new housing, particularly in the downtown area, through use of technical and grant resources, use of the town's revolving loan program, and the redesign of our land use and development regulations. For more than a decade, we have actively partnered with developers, including Shire's Housing, the Housing Authority, the Putnam Project, and Hail Resources, to increase housing stock through both rehabilitation of older units and new construction. Bennington is also pleased to be home to state agencies for the county and a healthy and engaged nonprofit sector. These entities have served our county well. We understand the advantages of housing individuals needing to access state services close to those services. However, this places a significant strain on Bennington as the primary housing and sheltering location. To help, to help us help those in need more effectively and to build the additional social infrastructure that our communities need, the Bennington Select Board asks you, as our legislative delegation, to address the needs outlined below. Provide specific funding to communities, including Bennington, who serve as hub communities for unhoused families and individuals. These communities generally host state health and social services and serve as economic hubs in their counties. The strain on municipal government services, nonprofit organizations, and schools is substantial. Double the Bennington County funding for Pathways Vermont to expand their services to work more closely with unhoused individuals and families. They have demonstrated their expertise in providing an effective housing model. Increase funding to our transit system partner, Green Mountain Express, to increase the number and reach of the system so that families that rely on public transit have efficient access to work, school, and services located not just in Bennington, but throughout the county. Last, we ask that the legislature do the hard work of addressing the barriers in state laws and regulations, including elements of Act 250, so that communities can increase housing stock in a timely manner. The town of Bennington thanks our delegation for the assistance provided over the years and looks forward to working collaboratively to serve our community in this present crisis. Sincerely, the Bennington Select Board.
Okay, so I just want to, so do we have, do we have any thoughts on this letter that you want to share? I think if we can, we want to be able to go ahead and send this out. We don't expect some of these things to be addressed till next session, but it sounds, from what we heard today, that there are other, there are some, there's some work that can already get started. So if we can, if, if we can get them, the delegation, to move on this quickly, I think we would like to. Any, any questions, concerns about the letter? Can we vote? Thank you. Okay.
A second then.
Okay. Any more discussion? All right, with Jim abstaining, let's go ahead and vote then. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions besides Jim? Okay, all right, great, thank you. All right, so that, I think that sort of gives us a lot of the overall pieces, and what we'd like to do, I think at this point, is open it up to the public. I think that there are people here who would like to share perspectives and maybe questions and other comments. So any from, anyone from the public like to speak?
Sam Rochino, Bennington, Vermont. I like what I hear of our state engaging in helping these people in transitional housing. On the forefront, I know for a fact that you're going to have people that are going to ignore the, these efforts despite the state having this availability to them, and we just put in a very neat and admirable rail trail, and I would hate to see the situation go back to what it was on Benmont Avenue with a tent city.
Anyone else?
Clark Adams, Bennington, resident. Couple of things. I don't recall the gentleman's name, but I, I have to commend him because he kind of deflated a major part of my concerns in dealing with homeless or lack of housing in Vermont. One of my experiences, having lived all over this country and dealing with people in home living crises and all, is homelessness is not a monolithic thing. And a lot of our efforts or actions seem to be trying to answer the problem with one solution, and that's just not going to happen. As we all know, money seems to be what is on the table, and that goes in two directions. We all know money is the root of all evil. We also know that who's, who here is prepared to kill the goose that lays the golden egg? So I, I've been hearing about this motel voucher crises, and the question that always popped in my mind was, I've always heard it's a temporary situation, this one, this program was temporary, but who or what needs to be done to address the fact that when this temporary program was put in effect, what was the long-term plan? So here we have a short-term plan to a long-term multifaceted problem that people want an answer to. And there is, there's not going to be an easy answer. Again, I commend this gentleman and his organization, because I've heard some of the most sensible approaches, but I think we all have to sit back and recognize, this is not going to be solved in the near future, and it's not going to be easy to solve, and we're all going to have to dig deep into both our spirits and wallets to address the problem.
Thank you. Anyone else like to speak? Okay, all right, so. Yes, yeah, yes. You walking? Come on up.
Oh, me or?
You.
Okay. Hi, my name's Chad Foster. I'm a therapist in the Bennington area. I work directly with a lot of these people that are going through this crisis now, and I also am a part of the subcommittee with some of these amazing people. And I have to say, I agree with the gentleman that just spoke, that there isn't one answer. There isn't going to be. But that's what we're trying to achieve, is everybody's involvement, all hands on deck. We're not only pleading to the subcommittee here, we're pleading to the town. We need the town to help in this. We need the community to get involved. And when we put something out there, people not turning a blind eye to it and saying, "It's not my problem." This is something that's a whole-town problem. I've been here for, I'm a newbie, so four years total, and I've seen some of the kindest, met some of the nicest people I've ever met in my life here. And I feel that the hope of the committee is to continue that effort, that culture, that feeling. And when it boils down to it, this whole process, it's never going to be a straight line. Never has, never will be. And every person is going to need a different approach. And that's why it's so important for us to be that Swiss Army knife, to try to handle these situations, as having us all involve multifaceted approaches, seeing it from different perspectives. Thank you.
Thank you. Please hold your applause. We're already, yeah, yeah, yes, please, come on up.
Hi, I'm Philip Gerard. I'm a resident of Bennington, Vermont. I want to give you a view from the street level. Because of my contract with my employer, I'm not allowed to mix politics with the job. However, one of the people on the board does know what I do with a living, which will validate what I'm going to try to say. I appreciate what the town is trying to do. I wish you the best of luck. This is not going to be an easy solution. I deal with people who come into the state. I'll recognize them and say, "Hey, I've never seen you before. What brings you to the area?" Most common answer, and I know where they're getting their information, is, well, Vermont's got the best benefits, and we really don't have to do much to collect them. Go onto the MSN website, top 10 states to collect benefits. Vermont is in that top 10. Just a couple of other things I wanted to throw out. The people that have been evicted from these motels, they've gotten, as he, the gentleman had mentioned, first, second, and third chances to come up with a plan. I've suggested a plan. Put some money aside to get first and last month's rent. Reach out to a family member. Go back home to Springfield, Mass., Pittsburgh, Pennsylvania, Baltimore, Maryland, Albany, New York. They've had their chances. They, well, will deal with it when it happens. And then the other thing I thought about was, is it possible that somebody could reach out to one of the bigger shelters like the Salvation Army? Now, I'm only using Kmart as a reference to size. Kmart's not the location. But a building the size of Kmart can hold 60 people. That includes shower, laundry, kitchen, facilities, counselors, financial aid, anything you could possibly manage, mention to help them transition back into a normal lifestyle. I'm just throwing these ideas out for other people to think about, and maybe Bennington might want to reach out to like Goodwill or Salvation Army. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Yes.
I'm Mary Ellen Munley, a resident of Bennington. And I just wanted to comment and ask for help wherever it would come. I have to imagine that there are many just citizens who are concerned about the unhoused situation and the emergency that we're facing, but it, there's like emergency, and then there's emergency. And when there's a sort of physical emergency, or something that happens because there's been some kind of extreme weather, there's a way for ordinary citizens to be able to contribute, and you get that sense of community participation and a community caring. I would love to work with anybody, with any ideas that we have, to figure out how we do that in relation to a social issue. There's got to be things that we as regular citizens, I super appreciate what the town can do, what the state government can do, what the social agencies can do. There's got to be something that we can do as individuals. And I don't have the capacity as a single individual, but what ideas might we be able to have? And is there some leadership that the Alliance, the Select Board, can help us with to figure out how to coalesce the individual communities, the individual citizens of this community to do what we can do for our fellow citizens who are in really tough shape and will continue to be? We need more of a sense of urgency about this, and I would, as I say, can we find a place where we can get together and make something like that happen?
Thank you.
I'm Kelly Carroll. I'm a longtime resident of Bennington. And I just wanted to say thank you for the letter that you're sending to the legislative delegation that we have. And I also want to take this opportunity to recognize that we have three representatives in the room, and I do realize that that letter probably won't have much of an impact until we get back into the next session, but I ask you to keep what you hear tonight in mind, and I ask you to advocate on the, on behalf of people in Bennington. I was very, very happy to hear that there's 1,000 beds coming, very disappointed that we have to look outside of the county for assistance for some people. I think it's great that Chittenden, and I think you said Washington, right? We, we all know Washington, you know, and Donahue has a lot of strength up and different people from Chittenden County, and I think it's time that we need to make Bennington a priority. Vermont does not stop in Rutland, and I encourage everybody to remember that, and I thank you for writing that letter, and I hope that they listen, and I hope that the rest of our representation up north listens as well. So, thank you.
Thank you, Kelly. Yes, Lori. And then, okay.
I just wanted to speak about the homeless situation.
Introduce yourself and speak directly into the microphone, please.
Sure. Lori Mulhern, resident of Bennington. And I wanted to speak about the homeless here in Bennington and around our county. There's a group called Helping Hands of Bennington County. It's a Facebook group. It's a Facebook group, but we are over 2,000 members strong and these are individuals that are reaching out and helping other individuals, whether they be homeless, whether they need food, whether they need beds. Some get new apartments through the different programs and we help them furnish them or, you know, whether it be sheets, blankets, pillows. I myself have driven to Chester to pick up two twin beds and delivered them during the pandemic at 10 o'clock at night, just to make sure two kids had beds. There's a lot we can do as individuals. However, I am also part of a state program standing committee for children, adolescent and family mental health. I also serve on the Mental Health Block Line Council and several other subcommittees. And mental health is a big issue across the state of Vermont. We're working on doing it better. However, there's going to be those challenges. And a lot of issues also have to deal with situational settings. And I just ask that the community, if you're going to really want to be heard, they need to hear you up north. I can't tell you how many times that I've heard from people in Montpelier and state representatives, well, we just, Bennington's so quiet. And I'm like, wow, how can they say that? You know, because we're down here screaming and they, apparently they just don't hear us. And I don't want to be known as the forgotten kingdom. And I just ask that the community, you know, if you want to join Helping Hands of Bennington County, we're out there on Facebook. It seems to be the only way to connect us all. But if you want to reach out to me, feel free. It's me and three other women that kind of manage the group and do activities. And I've delivered food at hotels where this one couple was placed there and they had powdered drink mix in two cups and no transportation. And it was a Friday. So, I mean, I kept them alive over the weekend, just with food, you know, just in hopes that they could connect to services on the following week. But it's those little things. I've given rides from people from Powell into town. Delivered veggie van gogh. A lot of our volunteers have picked up veggie van gogh and delivered boxes to those without transportation or those that are disabled. I really encourage anyone in the community who wants to do those little things. This is a group where you can kind of participate in helping those who are in need in your own community. And as I said, we're 2,000 members strong and then, you know, I also ask that we support any kind of shelter we can provide, emergency shelter during hot times and cold times, cold weather, because we've run into that and we don't have a cold shelter or a hot shelter. We don't have anywhere for them to go and, you know, when they're turning them away at the local homeless shelter, I feel really bad because then they're sleeping in tents and they're underneath the bridge or they're somewhere else. And, you know, I just wish we had a better solution, but I do ask the community to keep trying. Thank you.
Thank you. Others who would like to speak?
Nancy White, Bennington. I think there's more than a few citizens in Bennington that are eager to see other towns in the county start to step up and do something. It must have been about 22 years ago that a few citizens came before our select board and asked permission to start the Town of Bennington Homeless Coalition to help citizens in our town that became homeless. And at that time, the village of North Bennington had their own coalition and I think they had two shelters open. And not long after we opened our first shelter in Bennington, North Bennington Village closed theirs and never reopened. And I don't know if after 20 years, we're still the only town in Bennington County with shelters. We shouldn't be. There should be shelters in Manchester, there should be shelters in Arlington, and it seems that the other towns are happy to sit back and wait for Bennington to try to solve all the issues in the county. I was very disappointed, I don't know if it was three to five years ago, I read in the paper that our local coalition turned themselves into a county group without public discussion. To this day, the board of that group still hasn't gotten themselves onto the ballot in each town in Bennington County to seek local tax dollars from each town during town meeting. I learned that anyone homeless in Bennington County can now come stay in our shelters in Bennington and this really needs to be addressed on a town-wide issue. We have been building low-income housing in Bennington for over 50 years. And when you compare our percentage to what the other towns actually have, you would be shocked. I've watched a lot of the houses, especially on my side of town, County Street to Main Street, single-family homes have been turned into apartments. And I think, again, unless you're going to start focusing on drawing all the towns in and helping, this is going to be a never-ending battle for Bennington. So I urge the people who are getting together with this alliance, you've got to start going to the other towns and the other towns have to be willing to start doing something to help us. And I also urge people to put pressure on Montpelier. This issue of everybody turning their heads on people with severe mental health issues needs to end. We have people who are a danger to themselves and others. They should not be in an apartment, they should not be in a motel. They need to be in 24-hour supervised care with people who know what they're doing. The woman in Brattleboro who was so brutally murdered at the shelter by someone there, it sounds like the person never should have been there, they should have been in a facility. And for the amount of money this state got for ARPA, there should be a building somewhere under construction in Vermont that can hold 40 to 50 people who need 24-hour supervision. And this is something we have to focus on. We cannot continue to watch those things happen across the state and this is one of the first things. These people need to be safe and the public needs to be safe.
Anyone else like to speak?
So I think our next, so I think what we are wanting to do at this point is keep this discussion going. We have a lot of things that we need to accomplish and it's going to take all of us to do it, as has been noted. And I think that, I hope that hearing the successes, the needs, the plans that are in the works and the strong desire of everyone to work together is what we can walk away with and come back and continue this work. So I thank you all. This has been, I think, a really helpful opening session and we will continue to have these conversations with the select board. So thank you. I think that we should all take a five-minute break because we are at that. It is 8:20 and we will come back in five minutes and continue our agenda. All right, we are continuing the meeting and we are on item seven, which is implementing the town vision. Tom, I'm going to turn that over to you.
Thanks. First, we'll have Kelly Carroll up, who's going to talk about the upcoming CPAR listening
Hi, I'm Kelly Carroll from Bennington. I am the chair of Bennington's Community Policing Advisory Review Board. And I just wanted to remind everybody that our monthly meeting is happening in this very room on Thursday, June 15th at 6:00 p.m. We're going to have Lorna Maturn from UCS as one of our guests. She'll be here speaking about the relationship that UCS has with BPD. And we'll also have Chief Paul Doucette, who will be talking about some of the new changes with the legislative laws and how that affects policing. And then also, just another reminder, on June 29th, which is a Thursday, from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m., CPAR will be having its first community listening session. What is community policing to you? So we're hoping that you'll show up and you'll share your experiences, your ideas, you'll provide some input for us to help guide us on what we should be working on as we go into the next year. And we will have pizza and childcare available for the participants. Again, that's going to be Thursday, June 29th, from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. in this room. And we invite the entire Bennington community to come in and, again, share your experiences, your ideas, provide some input. And it will be on CAT TV Live and we thank CAT TV for that.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
And the only other thing I have is to remind everyone that Saturday is Bennington's Juneteenth observation. It'll be in the lawn outside the school offices on, is that North Street?
Between Depot and North.
Depot, yeah.
I'm sorry, Depot Street, out in the back.
The old tunnel lot.
Okay, the old tunnel lot, behind the offices. It'll be from noon to 3:00 and we're hoping to see everyone there. This will be the second Juneteenth observation for Bennington.
Great, thank you. All right. And then next up, we have Jonas Vivak to talk about the Village Cemetery repairs. Thank you very much for doing this.
Just going to dim the lights here, once again. I will be pretty speedy about this presentation, but it's really important. Some of you may recall, last fall, we had a really tragic incident of over 200 headstones being overturned in one of Bennington's oldest cemeteries, the Village Cemetery. A terrible, tragic story, but one with a happy ending where the community really came together, along with people from near and far, to write all of those 200 stones. But what we couldn't do then was repair some of the stones that had been broken. And at that time, last October, we decided that we were going to do a follow-up effort this spring to repair as many gravestones as we could. And tonight's presentation is about that second part of this sad story, but with a happy ending. So please. The Village Cemetery is one of Bennington's most historic cemeteries. It is the resting place for about 2,100 souls. I used to say veterans from every war were represented in this cemetery, but I'm not sure about the War of 1812, so now I'm just saying from many wars. Dozens of headstones were repaired as part of this effort. And it's important to note that to hire someone to do this work, it's usually in the order of hundreds of dollars to repair a single stone. We had volunteers come from our town. The VFW Auxiliary and the VFW, again, as they were last fall, were amazing in their support for this effort, as was our state representative, Mary Morrissey. You'll see her in a number of these images. It was really amazing to see how much support we had for this, even though it was a full six or seven months after the tragedy. Although, having said that, we did have an incident earlier this spring of a vandalism at the cemetery, but how different this time. We now have cameras in those cemeteries and an engaged local citizenry that is watching that cemetery like hawks. In the case this spring, the juveniles responsible were caught within hours. We had volunteers from Halifax, Vermont, Clarendon, Rutland, Bennington, and surrounding towns come out for this effort. It's really incredible to see how this story resonates near and far, not just with our own residents, but encouraging people from all around to come help with this effort. Please. Most importantly, we need to recognize the efforts of the Vermont Old Cemeteries Association. We see here, there's Kevin on the left and Tom on the right. These individuals, along with a crew of probably six or eight folks that came to help us in this effort, were absolutely invaluable. Their expertise was what showed us how to do this work of fixing gravestones. They brought a ton of equipment and without them, we simply couldn't have done it. The reason we did it on May 27th is because that was the only have done it. The reason we did it on May 27th is because that was the only day they had available when I spoke to them last October to plan this event. At the time, in October, I didn't realize it was going to be on Memorial Day weekend. And in fact, I worried greatly that the timing would really hurt turnout and volunteers. And I'm happy to say I was wrong. And instead, I think the fact that it happened on Memorial Day weekend was a true testament to what that Memorial Day is really about. Some volunteers were already asking me, can we do it again? Please. One of the side effects of having VOCA, the Vermont Old Cemeteries Association's participation, coming last year was they warned us about a number of trees in that cemetery that were positioned in such a way that they were endangering some extremely significant headstones in our cemetery. And if we did nothing, there was a chance that some of those priceless headstones could be destroyed. And I would point out that on the right, on that top image, that's the Putnam memorial stone. And Putnam was the fellow, you might recognize the name, he is who gifted our community the Putnam Hospital, as well as our water system. So I think by removing those trees that endangered some of these incredibly significant memorials, we made sure that their memory would be respected. And while we don't normally do pitches as part of this, the Vermont Old Cemeteries Association does, on a biannual basis, have a fundraising effort that they do. And with your permission, I would like to suggest we add something in our budget for next budget cycle to give something back to this organization, which has given us what must be many, many thousand dollars of effort and expertise to preserve our historic cemetery. So that's it for tonight. And I wanted to be brief, because it's been a long meeting. But this is such an important thing, and thank you very much for adding this to the agenda for this evening. Thank you.
Thank you, Jonah. That was great. Yeah. All right. And so we do need to, Jonah, make sure that, we'll put it in the tickler file for budget season?
I will follow up that.
Okay, okay. Great, thank you. All right. Moving on, appointments to boards and commissions. Tom, you are just getting to read a lot tonight.
I bought a big water.
Yes, so we have a slate of boards and commissions. Yes. And as well as the select board appointments for this year. Yes? Okay. Go for it.
All right. We are nominating to fill open boards and commission spots as follows: the Development Review Board, Ron Alderman, Bill Barney, and Charles Kokoras; the Housing Authority, Nancy Balconis, and Scott Fox; the Planning Commission, Ken Swirad, Bridget Elder, and current Vanderwielan; the Regional Commission, Donald Campbell; the Energy Committee, Chris Bates, Allison Levy, and Bruce Lee Clark; the CPAR, the Select Board has chosen to keep this seat open for the 2024 session; Historic Preservation, Joe Hall, Jeff Goldstone, Thomas Blakely; our select board appointments for '23 to '24; Bennington Free Library, Gary Corey Liaison; Better Bennington Corporation, Jean Connor Liaison; Community Policing Advisory Review Board, Tom Haley Liaison; Energy Committee, Jeanne Jenkins Voting Member; and Rescue Squad, Ed Woods Liaison.
Do I have a motion to accept the slate? Thank you. Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Okay. All right. Thank you very much. So next up is the manager's report.
Okay, just have a quick, little quick things that Stuart wanted me to note. No action items this evening, so that's good. We are continuing work on County Street, and we expect to complete the work there before the end of the fiscal year. You recall, it's a complete repaving, new sidewalks, et cetera. So that is moving forward. I expect curbing to be installed next week. So we're making good progress. Another project of note is the Depot Street sewer line slip lining. You may recall, when we had our water and sewer budget meetings, that slip lining is a very cost-effective way to repair failing pipe. And it's likely to last, those repairs are likely to last up to 100 years. So it's way less expensive than excavating and replacing pipe, and it's a great newish technology that our DPW folks are taking advantage of wherever they can.
I'm sorry.
That's all I have on the.
Okay, thank you very much. Do you want to entertain a specific question on County Street, Dan?
Sure.
Okay.
Sam Ristino, Bennington, Vermont. With the putting back together County Street, are they going to be adding any new sidewalks on that stretch of road?
There will be sidewalks on both sides.
You didn't answer my questions. Are you going to be adding new sidewalks? I mean, we're in expenditure where we don't really need to add any more new sidewalks if one's on one side. But by the looks of it, it looks like both sides of the road, we're putting brand-new sidewalks in.
That is correct, Sam. One of them will be.
Is there a need for that much? I mean, you're going to be really narrowing down that traffic.
The travel lanes will remain.
Okay, all right. We're just, question asked, question answered. All right.
Can I just, can I just ask?
Yeah.
Does Jonah or is Willow Park 100% complete yet?
It is.
Yay!
Okay.
Oh, good. Thank you.
Although physical construction work is completed, there's some paperwork, and we haven't paid for the improvements yet, but the complete, the construction work is done.
100% done.
100%.
Fantastic. Great. Okay. Upcoming agendas. What we think might be on the next agenda is the Ben-Hi agreement, if it's ready.
If it's ready, yes. We're working on that.
Skate park design.
Yes.
Monument Arts and Culture Center will be joining us for presentation. The hearing for the closeout on the Norton House, Lucshire's housing, and perhaps the water and sewer rates.
Yes, that is the intention. Yeah, we really need to make sure that happens next time. And we also talked about some parking changes.
Oh, yes, yes. And looking at parking at the firehouse and also at the community garden, right? Designate parking for firefighters. Yep, okay. All right. And, all right, and we have, we will be moving the BBC discussion that we thought we were going to have at the next meeting to July.
First meeting in July, yes.
Okay. Anything else? Feels like it's enough. Okay, other business. Sarah, other business. Okay.
Congratulations to all the MAU grads.
I want to drive that point home that Jean just made. I was introduced to an Instagram page over the weekend that the student body has put together, the MAU seniors put together, with what their plans are. And it is the most amazing thing to look and see where these kids are going and what they're doing. So if you ever wonder what our MAU achievements look like, there are places to go to be really proud.
Wonderful, wonderful. All right. So we have need of an executive session on a legal matter as premature public knowledge would place a person involved in the subject matter at a substantial disadvantage. No action will be taken. And coming back into open session, could I have a motion, please?
Some move.
Take it. Great. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right. Thank you.